Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of August 9th, 2022. We call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If we would all rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You got me that time. All right. Let's see. Our first order of business this evening is Syncarfae Carver LLC, 104 Tremont Street, modifying location of access road to the project area from Tremont Street. Discussion and possible vote.
Evening, members of the board. Thanks for having us. My name is Andrew Vardakis. I'm a civil engineer and project manager with Wood. We're the engineering and permitting consultant here on behalf of Syncarfae. So essentially, we're here tonight for this permit modification on the proposed solar project at 104 Tremont Street. In a nutshell, essentially, we are looking to modify the access to the site. So this sheet spells it out pretty well here, but essentially what we're trying to do is modify access to the site along the existing entrance at 104 Tremont Street right here. You can see on the screen. And the proposed modification is the bold line to the south here, this bump out to the south. So essentially, what we're trying to do is relocate access to the site around the existing paved entrance to move the access road and the electrical utility poles to the south, further away from the abutting neighbor to the north here. So essentially, the applicant is working with the property owners and the trustees as a good neighbor to try and move the access further away from the property there. So what we've done here is, you know, we've been here in the past before looking at other access routes. Essentially, we have the same detail as you'll see in the following sheets for the proposed access road width. It's 12 feet wide. It varies to up to about 20 at the entrance and exit as it bumps around, but it can accommodate truck traffic up to 48 feet for a fire truck or construction traffic, things of that nature. But essentially, the road goes through a bit of a wooded area through there, so we have some tree clearing involved to get the road in, the poles in, and a little bit of site grading in the back end here to get the road back in. With that, there's a bit of change in ground cover from trees to gravel, so we took a look at stormwater. So there is a bit of a change with stormwater. So on the southern side of that road, we have a stormwater infiltration trench which would collect any additional runoff. The gravel road itself is pervious, so it'll accept any stormwater infiltration, but just the change going from trees to gravel, we added in a roadside trench to accommodate that. So essentially, that's the change we're requesting in a nutshell for the minor modification. So here, happy to field any questions, discussions. Also, representatives from Syncarfae are here, so happy to discuss further.
Thank you. I see. Now, you were before us not too long ago requesting a much different modification. I don't see wetlands on this. Are there any wetlands within 100 feet of the proposed work site?
No.
All right. And I believe you were planning previously to use the existing overhead poles, so I'm just a little confused why you just kind of bump out around the road like that. I'm not sure what's... I'm putting in a second road, so I'm kind of curious.
Yeah, so the poles are required as part of the interconnection through Eversource, so those are required no matter which way we come in. So even with the other entrances, new poles are going to be required per the interconnection.
Right, but I believe we... It's supposed to all be underground, but at the time, they were existing poles, and you were planning on using those existing poles. And that's why we granted you the waiver, so that it didn't have to be underground. So why are you just going out around this access road around the existing poles at this time?
Do you want to take them?
Yeah. Good evening. Graham Gaskowski from Syncarfae. We're the developers of the project. This pole lineup, we actually tried to negotiate less poles with Eversource, but this is their standard, right? So in our original permit approval, we showed two circuits on the existing access road, and then we would use the existing pole lineup along the site access road that goes all the way to the facility as best... as much as we could. We are shifting the poles over here to preserve the viewshed off Tremont Street and to also not be in this neighbor's front yard, because more or less, they are going to have a view of two circuits of poles down either side of the road. So we're doing this to be good neighbors at the end of the day. So regardless of if we go back to our original site plan approval or this one, the same number of poles that Eversource requires is not going to change. The two circuits will be required no matter what.
And how many poles are you planning on requiring?
Right now, I think we are showing the maximum amount that Eversource believes is going to be part of the final design that they are currently working on, but this is the minimum amount. I think, what's the count?
About 14.
14, yeah.
14. Now, if it was underground all the way to the interconnection point, then you'd only need three poles, correct?
I don't know for certain, but that unfortunately is not an option with Eversource, because this is their standard pole lineup for a development of this size and scope.
Did you apply for an underground permit?
We did, and we tried to negotiate optimized equipment setups, and Eversource was not receptive to it, because they like putting stuff above ground and having access along either side of the road to...
Do you have a letter or from Eversource or something to back that up?
We do not have... We have emails, correspondence with their designers, but Eversource unfortunately is a big black box at the end of the day when we try to...
Well, this is something for maybe future reference, that you should make sure that you have some sort of written assessment from Eversource, because we haven't run into the problem where Eversource requires above-ground poles, usually only at the interconnection point, and everything is underground up until that point, except for the couple poles necessary for interconnection. So I'm kind of curious. So you're going to add a minimum of 13 poles?
Yeah, we actually tried to cut that in half, but Eversource said that's not their standard pole lineup for this site, because we have storage and PV, so there's two circuits required, two separate protection schemes for each energy source.
Is equipment going to be mounted on these poles?
There will be a recloser on each circuit and an air brake switch for a disconnect. So there is... We don't have the final design yet, but Eversource tells us they are working on it. You know, we've tried to lobby to get, you know, better designs from Eversource early on in the process, so when we're coming before, you know, the towns that host our projects to get these permitted, we know exactly what we're building. Unfortunately, it doesn't always work out, because they're not very receptive to us.
When you applied to... For this change, did you apply for underground utility connections, or did you apply for...
For this specific minor modification?
No, right.
No, we... Well, no, we did not. We applied for our standard smart configuration. This is a Massachusetts Smart Solar Project, which we've built in other Eversource MECO territory, and they apply the same design standard to this project as they did there.
And will any of this be visible from the road?
That is the reason for this minor modification, to preserve the viewshed off of Tremont Street and also from the neighbor to the north.
Are you going to provide screening?
We believe that the limits of clearing shown, we'll screen it properly. We can work with the butters, the town, if they would like to request additional screening, where feasible, we will certainly entertain it.
I don't know if you know off the top of your head, I believe, and I might be mistaken, that Tremont Street is a scenic road. I don't know, because the list is extensive, so...
If I may. So I don't know that it's a scenic road, but the parameters for scenic roads in Massachusetts, I think it's chapter... I can't even tell you. There's a lot of chapters in Massachusetts general law. But a scenic road basically deals with stone walls and trees within the road right-of-way. Things that are outside of the road right-of-way do not fall under scenic roads. So anything in that road right-of-way, tree, you have to have a hearing for, a street tree hearing for. If it's on a scenic road, that street tree hearing is not with the tree warden, it's with the planning board. So those are the parameters of scenic roads.
Couple other questions here. You said the road is 20 feet wide?
Just at the entrance and egress, where it kind of widens out for the connection to the existing road, but generally throughout the main section, it's 12 feet.
12 feet. And why is a road required if you were just to run telephone poles through the woods?
Well, the road's required for accessibility to service the equipment and to also install it. We would have to clear and situate the poles on the edge of the road.
And what's the setback on this from the neighboring property?
The closest neighbor was across the street. There's a dimension there. It's 55 feet off the northern edge of the road, so from there, you know, at this corner, it's 55, you know, 55 feet down, but it varies. They're not exactly parallel here, but this is a 55-foot dimension for reference right here.
That's 55 feet off of the road that's already in existence, correct?
Correct, correct. So over here, that would be, you know, 55 feet less if you're going, you know, in this direction, but, you know, greater if you're going in this direction.
Yeah, what about the bottom property line there?
Yeah, that's existing property ownership. That's just an approximate. That line is not a true property line. This is all owned by Federal Furnace down here.
That line that above the road would more or less represent our leasehold?
Our leasehold line? If we were to, you know, get an approval and revise our lease limits.
Now, it looks like you brought it underground up to this point where you're looking to connect it to the poles?
That's correct. It transitions to a riser pole underground, and then you'll see the end of that underground transitions up to the existing utility pole along the site access road.
Is that a modification from the original decision?
That's correct.
And so that's part of what you're requesting here?
That's... Yeah, and that's customer-owned equipment, so that's not utility-owned.
Has this been through Conservation Commission?
I don't believe it had to. Did it, true? Because it's not...
My understanding is the applicant had a meeting with Conservation Agent, and it was deemed not required.
Okay, as long as you get that in writing.
There was a site meeting two weeks ago, I believe, we had with the Conservation Agent at the site, and it was not in that...
I'd prefer that you get that in writing and as part of the file.
Okay.
All right. Any questions?
How much of that area is going to be cleared?
It's about 16,000 square feet.
So is it all going to be cleared back to the existing road?
There's a little bit...
Or are you just clearing for the road?
Just clearing for the road. There's a section, you can kind of see the existing tree line. It's this light gray clouded area here. So the area out by Tremont is not wooded in this area, so the clearing starts back in here for the overhead and then back in here for the road, and this would be... The majority of this would be cleared back in here and for the underground run out to the pole here. It's demarcated by the TC line. That's the tree clearing limit there.
Well, what, go up with the arrow? Nope. Go left and up, a little bit to the left. I'm trying to go to the...
Oh, in here?
So that's a tree line, right?
Correct. That will remain.
That's going to...
That's going to remain.
Okay, and you're just basically going to be using the... About... Can you give me an idea how much you're going to clear to put a 20-foot road, 20-foot wide?
Yeah, so essentially, just clearing the width for the road and the poles, so the road's 12 feet and the poles, I think, 5 feet, so it's about a 20-foot swath, just to get that in.
And your hope is putting it in there is going to... Well, that's going to be a natural buffer for the neighbor?
Correct.
Yes.
And is there drainage ditch in regards to this road?
There's an infiltration trench that we put in on the southern side there that I mentioned earlier, and there's a detail inset on the upper right-hand side of the sheet, if I can get there. There.
And that's not included in the road width of 20 feet, or it is?
No, so the 12 feet would end at this line here, and then this would be an extra two feet, and then the pole would be just on the other side of that.
Okay. I would like to see screening at the end of the road.
Where exactly, if you don't mind me asking, so we can...
I would think at the two points, one on one side, the southern side of the original, where you have a little triangle.
That area where he's hovering over the mouse?
Yeah, but it's going to have to be, what, 20 feet off the road anyways?
More or less 20 feet off of the right-of-way.
And to the north of it to screen it from?
Can we more or less follow the curb cut?
No, no, not even. It doesn't have to be aligned. It doesn't have to be that tight, but it should be, you know, in this area here, in this area up here, so that it's not... So it's appropriately screened from public view.
Yeah, we are open to that. I mean, on the northern side, there is a house there, so I'm not sure what exceptions...
How come the house isn't done in the...
Well, you see that cutout for the driveway right there? It's just not shown on this plan. We can... On earlier iterations of our site plan, you could probably see it in the ALTA document. My one... We are open to any screening that, you know, the board would like us to install, but there are some existing... On either side of the road, there's two old rock walls, and there's a sign for Federal Furnace, so we obviously don't want to obstruct that.
Right.
So, you know, we'll certainly work, you know, with our landlord, the abutter, and, you know, the board to satisfy the screening concern.
Right, because when it was on existing poles that were already there, that was existing conditions, but now you're creating...
I just want to clarify, existing plus, I mean, our original plan had the proposed for the interconnection utility-owned poles, and then the existing poles, we were going to use, you know, accordingly, if feasible. So, you know, when we originally were before the board and obtained our original approval, there was no screening requirement at this particular location. There are some, you know, abutters who approached us about screening other locations on Tremont, which we agreed to do and are working with outside of, you know, our permit approval.
If you stayed on the regular road, how many poles would be there?
Same amount that we're showing right now. We're actually... We're trying to design out less and force Eversource to cut down the number of poles, because as you can imagine, more poles cost us more money, right? More equipment, more capital costs we need to outlay. So we've also tried to prove then from a technical standpoint that you can use a single pole lineup and single recloser lineup, but their Safety and Protection Division within Eversource will not approve that.
And you're doing all this because of the neighbor, right?
Correct, and, you know, at the request of our landlord to be a good neighbor and good tenant, so that's why we're here. I mean, this is an increased cost to us, you know, so I mean, we're certainly willing to do it for, you know, for our landlord and the neighbors.
So question that on your remark with regards to the poles. So you go from leaving the site with overhead wire to underground to back up above ground at the...
At that turn.
At the exit turn.
Correct. Not at the exit turn. If you see the trench, it kind of tangentially intersects with the existing road, and there's a pole there that we're going to...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm referring to, the part that I guess...
Correct, yeah.
Turns north, where they start to turn north.
Now, is this road going to be used... Are you required to use this road for all vehicular traffic, or will some vehicular traffic in general be allowed on the current right-of-way?
Vehicular traffic will be permitted on this road. It's not just going to be for our use, so it would be for... I mean, I can't imagine the folks at Federal Furnace would want to take this detour and go about their normal course.
Mr. Chair, I think I understand what you... What are you... What's going to be happening with the current road that's there?
It will remain.
It'll remain, so is it going to be trafficked? Is it going to be used?
It will be.
You're making a new road, but you're also going to be leaving that road existing to work, to be worked on?
Correct, yes, at the request of our landlord.
I think it would... We would have to require that that be a one-directional road, and it would have to meet Fire Department standards.
Yeah.
And it would have to be approved through them.
So one of the things that... One of the concerns that I have, looking at the overhead map, the local map, when you're referring to the two rock walls that are there, from the looks of things, the road will go into the woods essentially right after those rock walls, and the concerns I have would be truck traffic possibly taking out one of those rock walls if it's... If the turn radius is not correct on that.
Yeah, this plan doesn't show it. We checked that after this was submitted, but those rock walls do... If you can see the cursor, the entrance of our new road starts just after those rock walls.
Right.
And when we designed the road, we checked the turning radius, as I mentioned, for a fire engine or a 40-foot long... 48-foot-long truck trailer, and it would stay within the limits of the existing road and the proposed road, so it can make all of these turns, and staying within the limits. So those walls are outside the limits of the road, and we would stay within the limits of the road.
Do we have a letter with recommendations from the Fire Department in regards to this?
There are early emails I've got with the Fire Department, said they'll give me a full letter, but basically Jesse's comments were more roads are typically better for the Fire Department. So access-wise, for them, initial response was not an issue for them.
Typically, they do require 14-foot with height clearance.
Yeah, 13 six minimum height clearance and 14-foot wide, but like I said, Jesse, my initial emails was, he'll get back to me with something formal, but he said essentially more roads are better for the Fire Department. He didn't see an issue with it. And if I may continue, the other thing I would want to confirm with our consulting engineer is just look at that swale, that French drain essentially they're putting on the side of the road, just to make sure that it's not an issue. I can't imagine with those sands and the soils that are out there, it's going to be an issue, but we always just have that stamp from Andy that's not going to be an issue. I think that the earlier conversations we had, I was a bit surprised with the number of poles as well, but having worked with N-Star, Eversource, on a number of things, a number of projects over the years, I'm not particularly surprised that this is their... That this is what they are requiring, and there's not a whole lot of negotiating with them. I tell people all the time, you're lucky that you're working with Eversource and not the CSX Railroad, because nobody could be less obliging than CSX.
Federal land or federal right-of-way through the railroads, correct?
No, they're private. Jacksonville, Florida, Water Street where I grew up, they've got a big building there, and basically says, "Don't ask any questions," is what we do. That doesn't really say that, by the way, at CSX, but that's the vibe. So, yeah, I was surprised when I looked at that. I'm like, this is the spacing, and these are the poles, and yeah, Eversource's program, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it.
I would have to agree with Mr. Chair. They would probably have to consider that a one-way road.
We're certainly open to doing that. We can post, you know, traffic signs, you know, that meet, you know, MUTCD codes for traffic control.
It's basically... The road is basically being created for the purpose of the poles.
And to preserve the viewshed and not get right in the abuttes from your view.
Basically, it's for the abutte.
More or less.
For everything. So maybe you should get, you know, it should have been planned out better with the abuttes when you first applied. Obviously, you knew then what it was going to take.
We had an inclination, but unfortunately, there was some information that came up at a later point in time that was given to us by our landlords, Eversource, with a certain number of poles, their design requirements, so it's, you know, we did what we could with the knowledge at the time, so, but...
All right. I think we have to continue this till we get more information. We'll need a letter from Emergency Services and...
If I may suggest, that because it is relatively minor, that the board consider approving the minor modification contingent on a review and a formal letter from the Fire Department, just trying to get projects off the table and Eversource's stuff. The sooner we can get something to them, the sooner they can get moving on their project. Screening along the roadway, review by engineering that the stormwater on the proposed road is fine, one-way marking on the road, and a formal letter from the Fire Department, either approving the road or asking for an additional foot or so of road surface, would be my recommendation, because this is a pressing matter for them.
Yes, and we would include screening, one-way, and if our engineer would look at the roadway itself as well as...
That turning radius and the fire and the drainage, correct?
All right. Any further questions from the board? All right. The Chair will accept the motion to approve with conditions as stated.
We don't have a public... This isn't a public hearing, is it?
No, it's a site plan modification.
Okay, so I will make that side motion then.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gasky. Do we have any discussion or concerns from the board?
The concern that I have is there's been no... Nothing showing any type of a communication with...
Right, well, we're gonna... I think we can make contingent on the applicant providing...
We ran into that with the other modification that they attempted as well.
Yes, so I think we can include in the motion, if it's all right with Mr. Robinson, that the applicant provide sufficient proof that Eversource requires this particular connection and not an underground connection.
Yeah, because personally, and just on a final note on this, is if Eversource is requiring all this stuff, what's the point of us having a bylaw that says it should be underground?
Right, I... That's, again, that's the question I asked, was when the application was filled out, how was it filled out?
Right.
I think that's an important... Something important to get straightened out, because we have seen engineering designs where it goes right to the road and everything's buried.
Yes, because I do remember one project where they wanted everything under the ground.
Yeah, it was at Plymouth Street.
Yeah.
Plymouth Street, there's another one off Meadow Street, I think it was, yeah.
They liked it more underground than putting poles on.
Right, so we will require that from you as a basis of our approval. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Deon.
Mr. Deon says nay.
Mr. Gasky.
Well, with the conditions in place, making sure that we have the communications and the letter from the Fire Department, as long as all that stuff is there and it's copacetic, then John Gasky says aye.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, you have a conditional approval, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next order of business is public hearings. As I understand, A.D. Makepeace has requested a continuance?
That is correct.
Do we need to open and close the public hearing?
I believe a simple motion by the board to continue the public hearing until 8:23 will suffice.
How full is our schedule in 8:23? How full is our schedule in eight-twenty-three?
You know, I was prepared for that question this time.
You're always prepared.
No, I'm not, but I, 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 I feel like nicely though. Um, so right now for the twenty-third, we're looking at A.D. Makepeace, uh, I don't want to be a spoiler here, but we're about to hear the same from lot three uh, in a second, uh, for, uh, the twenty-third as well as, uh, Muluski and, uh, Zero Forest Street, so.
That's four.
So we've got one, two, three, four, four items.
Continued from today or that are on our agenda?
It'll, it'll be on our agenda with the continuances, so we continue everything. We'll have one, two, three, four, and Jellystone, so five, five items for twen- eight-twenty-three.
Okay.
With everything ported from today to then.
That's, um, reasonable, gentlemen?
So we only had Jellystone for the next one?
Uh, previously we had Jellystone and we had Beals and Thomas had actually think had, uh, uh, no, we had Jellystone and, uh, Seventeen Wareham Street previously for the twenty-third.
Okay.
Jellystone.
We're not going to have Wareham Street?
Here we are.
So it'll be six.
So it'll be six?
Yeah, so twenty-third, Jellystone, Makepeace, Bridgestone, uh, Seventeen Wareham, Zero Forest.
How does the board feel about continuing to the twenty-third as opposed to?
Are we going to go through this for four?
Twenty on the twenty-third.
That's, that's the concern is that we, we kind of have.
Yeah, one meeting at midnight.
Right, we had special meetings to kind of thin everything out and then we kind of get backed up again.
They didn't even show here, so, you know.
Well, um.
Take two and put them even further back, another meeting. And we, we have four that night.
I will leave it to the board and accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of A.D. Makepeace Company, Beals and Thomas, requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street, which rode subdivision in Carver, Mass. in a residential agricultural district. The applicant wishes to construct a three-hundred-and-seventy linear foot roadway in cul-de-sac to support a two-lot conventional subdivision and I will accept a motion to continue at whatever date the board feels.
So the, we've got, uh, our upcoming meetings are eight-twenty-three and September thirteenth after that.
I would say September thirteenth.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue it to September thirteenth.
Uh, Mr. Robinson makes a motion and the second is made by Mr. Gasky. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, the board will vote. Mr. Deon?
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, uh, and again, we run into the same with the next public hearing.
Yeah, and let me say that, uh, A.D. Makepeace had asked for continuance last week, uh, based on the reviews. Uh, the next two folks are basically asking for continuance because we don't have a full board tonight.
The next two?
The next two.
Okay.
Yeah, I always.
Next few on the agenda for next.
Yeah, I, I always let the applicant know when there's a special permit, what their options are.
I think to be fair that we should be pushing one out with, with the other one.
Don't we have three? They're being pushed off?
There's, yes, there are three, so anyway we do it, we can't break it down the middle. All right, so you are correct, sir. So the board chair will accept a motion to continue the application of Bridgestone Development, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review located at lot number three, Ricketts Pond Park in Carver, Mass. in the Spring Street Innovation District. The project consists of the construction of two commercial buildings located at lot number three, Ricketts Pond Business Park located off Spring Street. The lot will be comprised of two commercial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Stormwater from the site development will be directed to infiltration basins designed to accommodate runoff from Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision to what date?
I'll make a motion to continue it to the twenty-third of August.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson? The, here's a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Excellent. All right. And, uh, the third public hearing is in the same box, so the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Prolleal Concrete Forms, Inc., requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two-thirty, thirty-one-hundred of the zoning, Carver zoning bylaw for property located at Zero Forest Street in Carver, Mass. in the general business zoning district. Applicant proposes the construction of a single commercial building, associated utilities, stormwater control, parking lots, and access drives. The building will be used as a craftsman tradesman building, continued to a date.
I'll move to, uh, continue to nine-thirteen.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Gasky, uh, seconded by Mr. Deon. Do we have any discussion?
Just for clarification, you said nine-thirteen?
Correct.
Seeing none, Mr. Deon?
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And just to be clear, uh, these continuances are requested by the applicants.
Correct.
Okay.
So, before we get too far off of, uh, Zero Forest Street, I did speak with the applicant who asked about whether the board wanted to have the property restaked with the new configuration. You've been to a site visit.
Is there anybody that didn't make the site visit?
I'm pretty sure, I think you weren't.
I've, I've been on my own.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think the only difference, oh, oh, not, not the only difference, but I think the, perhaps the critical thing, if you wanted something restake, is just that entrance drive.
I would, I would think that, that would be fine and, and we would just be able to go by and see it at our, our leisure because that's visible from the road, so I, I think that's fair.
All right.
So the buildings will all stand the same, just the entrance is unchanged.
Yeah.
Did you do the site walk?
I didn't, but I drive by it every day.
All right.
All right, I will let them know.
About the traffic off of the road.
Thank you.
I, I will let them know to stake that.
Next door of business, request for extension for special permit and site plan review, Galehead Development, Snippet Two at Pond, three, solar project, Zero Meadow Street.
Yeah, hi everyone, um, sorry, I haven't used a microphone in a while. Thanks for having me. Uh, my name's Cameron Knowles, um, I work, uh, for Galehead Development, which is the, the parent company for Snippet Two at Pond. Here are requests and, and extension to the special permit that I was, I think it was received on, uh, August thirty-first of last year. Uh, the, the main reason that we're s- uh, asking for this extension, uh, is because EverSource, really, in order to, to build the project, you need an, an interconnection agreement signed with EverSource. After our project went through study, which typically shortly after that, that study, uh, will receive an interconnection agreement from EverSource. EverSource, however, filed with the DPU, uh, a CIP filing, which is a capital, capital investment project, I believe, um, a CIP filing with the DPU, uh, and we are not going to be receiving our interconnection agreement with EverSource until that's cleared up. We expect this to last another few months and, uh, you know, fully expect to come to, uh, Carver with, with a building permit application in, uh, in twenty-twenty-three.
So, it looks like this letter from N-Star is dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two?
That's correct.
And what is the issue with CIP that's holding you up?
So, it's, EverSource is, is filing with the DPU or requests to issue a CIP, which is just an added fee to the projects, ours being one of them. We're part of a, a group study. Basically, the D, the DPU will rule whether we, the projects have to pay this CIP filing, but that, we won't get an interconnection agreement with EverSource until that's complete.
Are there issues with the fee associated with this?
No, we, we don't expect it, it's, it's, even if the fee comes in high, it shouldn't have a tremendous impact on our project's constructability.
Has any construction or development been started?
Nothing physical, but just general in the background, um, so one thing that we're doing is, uh, we're going to be starting to acquire community solar customers shortly, um. We're just doing that at, what's typically a bit early for the project, um, but other than that, no, no construction has started, no.
When did you apply for the, uh, interconnection permit?
I would have to, to look up the exact date, but, uh, I believe this was back in twenty-twenty, um, in about in the third, or in the summer of twenty-twenty.
Okay, if you could provide that letter.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, any questions from the board?
Is that far back, is that part of the, uh? If the request goes that far back, is this covered by the special law of COVID?
Well, this, uh, uh, you know, this frankly isn't an issue with being able to perform, it's an issue with N-Star being able to, to move the project along. So in our zoning bylaw, uh, it notes that, uh, uh, site plan approval shall lapse from the grant without substance use thereof, uh, or if not, is not, has not sooner commenced except for good cause. Uh, if the good cause is, you know, I ran out of money, I went on vacation, that's not a very good cause, but if the, if the ever aforementioned utility is basically telling you, we're putting a pause on everything until we do this bigger thing, then that to me sort of strikes as good cause. It's out of their control, um, until the, the utility, uh, moves on the interconnect, connection agreement.
But yet they haven't done any work on, on the land at all.
Well, for the most part, as we've just seen with, uh, Tremont Street, uh, through these interconnection agreements, uh, it's sort of a, 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 a moving target with the utility, how they want to go about doing those things. So anybody who's constructing things in, uh, prior to an inter, uh, interconnection agreement, one, I don't think you could get financing, uh, for any project without an interconnection agreement, knowing that the project's going to go through. And secondly, how do you start constructing something before the utility says this is where it's at? You'd be hard pressed to go out and fill a field with panels and not have any way to connect them.
So why would you apply for the, the plan without first getting the interconnection agreement?
You've got to go plan first. EverSource has to have a plan that's been approved to put the interconnection agreement forth.
Only because like he said, uh, they applied back in twenty-twenty, so you're talking almost three years.
I think it was twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one?
Uh, we approved this on August.
No, he said they, for the interconnection with N-Star, didn't he say twenty-twenty?
That was when the initial request was, was made.
Oh, so the initial request was made before the site plan was approved.
Correct.
And it still, to this day, has not been approved, or?
Right, that's, it's been two years.
It's going, and it's going to be almost three years.
Right.
And nothing's been done.
It's not, it's, right, it isn't, I, I can't put the onus on, on this gentleman.
I'm just saying, you know, that's kind of weird that it's taken three years for N-Star to respond to them.
N-Star's looking for more money.
Yeah.
The joy is from the government.
So.
We haven't heard this on any other project, you know? With the interconnection costing more money or anything, you know? That's.
Or, yeah, right, uh, or an extensive extended.
So I will add on, this is atypical. A CIP filing is, is not typical for a Massachusetts project with EverSource. It's, uh, nothing that we foresaw being an issue with the project and without the, the CIP issue specifically, we would plan, we'd be here having another discussion, um, looking to start construction pretty soon.
Well, I, I would say if they applied for the permit two years ago and they didn't get an answer back till a couple of months ago, I, I would say that they've done their due diligence, so I'm kind of, uh, I'm kind of in that direction. Now, how long do you expect it to take to get final approval?
It's, we've learned it's, it's hard to, 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 you know, give an exact window with, with EverSource, but, you know, it's been, the, we got the notice about the CIP filing in April, we, we probably expect, uh, the early half of, of twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, I'm sorry, so you got your interconnection results in April of twenty-twenty-two?
Like, for, three, four months ago?
Yeah, that, that sounds right.
Okay, and you haven't done anything since, you haven't gotten, you haven't applied for the building permit or anything?
No, we have not.
Why have you waited so long?
To see how this CIP issue falls into place, um, we don't want to really put the cart before the horse, um.
Wouldn't you have to pay for the building permit before you got?
It would be a substantial investment.
It'd be, yeah, it would be a, a substantial capital cost before having the building permit in hand.
But, but you're, you're, you were just saying that the, you don't expect that the fee would be very much with this CIP?
We don't expect it to, to kill the project, but it, it still could be a, a substantial fee, you know?
So why didn't you, like Chuck said, get a permit and stop building? I mean, do you already know you're going to get it? It's just how much money is it going to cost to connect, right?
So, if I may, just to help out, I don't believe that you can start a project. I don't believe any bank, any financier is going to finance a project until everything's in place. And the biggest hurdle for all these things is the interconnection agreement with the utility.
They don't have the, the main thing that they need in order to go forward.
Yeah, and I would add on to that, the, the Massachusetts SMART program, which is the incentive for solar, which is essentially how this, how this project is going to receive revenue. We cannot apply for that until we have, uh, the interconnection signed and approved, um, signed by Snippet Two at Pond and EverSource.
So if we do continue this for a year, um, do you expect that at that point in time, a year from now, you will have, have had substantial development completed?
Yes.
Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, the board will accept a motion in regards to the, uh, Snippet Two at Pond PV Three LLC, request for a one-year extension to its consolidated, a conditional special permit and site plan review approval that was received on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And I would need a continuance date.
I'll make that said motion to continue it for, are we going to continue it for one year?
It's, it's up to the board, so.
But I think, uh, so I'm, I'm making that continuance for a year. But I think, so, I'm, I'm making that continuance for a year. But if you don't get your interconnection before then, the project is essentially going to get squashed, right? Because, I mean, you really should get it, you really should get something within a year.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to say. We, I mean, we fully expect to, it would be unprecedented to not get anything back from the DPU, making a ruling on this.
So, my point is, get the continuance for a year. You're not going to be back here looking for it because you still haven't gotten an answer from them.
Absolutely not, we don't expect to be.
So, I make that said motion.
All right, motion made by Mr. Robinson to continue the Snipituit Pond PV3 LLC for a one-year extension to August 31st, 2023. Do I have it here second?
Before we go any further, do we need to read Mr. Williams in?
Is this a special permit?
This is, this is for a special permit.
I, I don't believe that granting an extension is modifying a special permit. I think it's a simple majority vote by the board.
Okay.
But, good call to check on that.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Gatsky. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
Well, seeing so, it's not their fault. Mr. Dillon says aye.
John Gatsky says nay.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
All righty.
Thank you.
I have one, Snipituit Pond, is that Lakeville?
What'd you say?
Snipituit Pond, is that in Lakeville? Is it company named after, or is it?
So, in order to name projects, because we've had a problem where we would use quadrangle, quadrangles, but we ended up naming projects of the, about, like, on the neighboring town. So, we just take large bodies of water in the area. I didn't, I didn't know the backstory of this one until, until I heard about that about a month ago.
Because, no, it's just, not even in this town, or this town, you know?
Yeah.
Pick something local.
Should have.
Yeah, grow local.
Well, thank you.
All right, next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan, AD Makepeace Company, Wayne Kinko, zero and 46 Federal Road. I believe the proponent has requested a continuance until 9/27/22.
That's correct, and I had to double check to make sure that was really the date because it seemed like, maybe I wrote the date down wrong, but I went back and that's what they've requested. They're still working on, uh, just refining the plan.
Do we need to vote on it? It's not a special permit.
It's not a special permit, it's not a hearing. Just continue till 9/27, or off to the races.
And continued, we will continue the preliminary subdivision plan of AD Makepeace Company, Wayne Kinko, zero and 46 Federal Road until 9/27/22.
Can I just bring up something real quick for this? Is this going to end up being like the, the other preliminary subdivisions where they came in and said, we don't care?
Well, I, I think they received a letter from our engineer and their.
Because if that's the case, then why continue it? Why not just go ahead and vote?
So, in each of those previous instances, when we got to the point that the technical information was in for Andy to review, and he gave them that review, they said, we have the information that we need to proceed with the definitive plan. In the case of these folks, they haven't gotten to that point yet. So, everybody else said, we got the technical information, technical review we're looking for through the consulting engineer. And AD Makepeace Wayne Kinko hasn't gotten to that point yet. They're still putting together the technical things for Andy to review.
I don't see the point.
All right, next order of business. I, no, I don't, I, I'd be more than happy to.
Do we need to vote on the continuance?
We don't need to vote, but, but we can.
Oh, oh, well, never mind that.
If you want, if you want.
No, no, I thought that was.
No.
I thought, I, sorry.
No, I, I was double checking with Mr. Bott, and he said, we can just continue it because it's not.
Yeah, it's not a hearing. I said, preliminary subdivision plans are one of the weird things in Massachusetts. There's a lot of weird things in Massachusetts general law for zoning, but this was.
Yeah, I misheard him. I thought, I thought that the chair was asking for a motion.
I'm, I'm with you.
All right. So, Planning Board Member Notes Chairman, I know some of our Planning Board meetings haven't been going out live, but they are available on Area 58 Television and YouTube. Under, under our notes, and I'm going to request that Mr. Bott help me with this because frankly, I'm not used to speaking this much, so.
All right.
We received a couple of letters of concern from the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health, and we wish to address that. So, if it's all right, I will read the Board of Health letter into.
Okay.
Into the record, and if, and I, I would request that you help me with the.
And I'll read the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much.
And do you, do you have, I have copies of your reply. Do you want me to distribute those to the board?
Please.
So.
It's all passed down?
Please.
Okay, I see.
Front, front and back.
Front and back. I'm going to, might, I think I printed mine up with bigger lettering, so I will, I'll be reading that one. All right, so we received a letter from the Board of Health, July 25th, 2022, a memorandum from the Board of Health to the Planning Board. Dear members of the Planning Board, it has come to the attention of the Board of Health that at a recent meeting, members of the Planning Board requested that the applicant and engineer consider changing the location of the proposed septic system and well as shown on the site plan before you. Be advised that the Planning Board does not have the authority to request such changes. Be further advised that the siting of the well and septic system are dictated by the location of the percolation test and deep test holes on-site that verify suitable soil for the proposed sewage disposal system. Also, the proposed septic system is specifically placed to provide for proper separation from stormwater systems, wells, and the like. By requesting the above described revisions, it would require additional excavation of test holes and percolation tests in the quote, "new" area, unquote, and a revision of the septic system design plan. A substantial unwarranted expense to the applicant. The Board of Health is committed to working, sorry, the Board of Health is committed to work with all boards in town. And to that end, if the Planning Board has questions or concerns related to septic system design, location, or any other issues, please reach out to us, signed by Eric Mueller, Chairman, Arthur Borden, Member, and Barry Callis, Member.
All right, and from the Carver Conservation Commission, memorandum to Carver Planning Board from Carver Conservation Commission, August 1, 2022. Dear members of the Planning Board, it has come to the attention of the Carver Conservation Commission that during the recent Planning Board meeting, members of the Planning Board requested the applicant and engineer considering changing the location of proposed septic system as well as depicting in the plan presented before the board, and well, as depicted in the plan presented for the board. The proposed well location was permitted by the Conservation Commission beforehand in accordance with 310 CMR 10, Massachusetts Wetland Protection Regulations, and the Carver Wetland Protection Bylaw. As the sole permitting authority for all work within the wetlands in corresponding buffer zones as dictated by statute, Carver Conservation Commission does not believe the Planning Board, nor any other committee, commission, board has the right to restrict, repeal, revoke, or require additional changes to decisions that have been made regarding wetland protection. Allowing Conservation Commission decisions to be quote, "second-guessed", unquote, by an unauthorized and unqualified board would undermine the authority of the commission and would leave all applicants in doubt as to whether any decision is final or not, resulting in significant needless expense in both time and finances. The Conservation Commission is committed to work with all town boards, but remains steadfast in its belief that it, and it alone, is the permitting authority for all matters regarding wetlands protection. If you have any questions or concern, please do not hesitate to contact the Conservation Commission. Regards, Conservation Commission, Savory Moore Chair, signed by Savory Moore Chair, Alan Germain, Vice Chair, Dan Badger, Member, David Hall, Member.
All right, and the chairman of the Planning Board chose to respond and ran it through Mr. Bott for confirmation. Date, August 9th, 2022, to the Carver Board of Health, Carver Conservation Commission, from Cornelia Shea, Carver Planning Board Chairman, in regards to letters from the Carver Board of Health dated July 25th, 2022, and letter from Carver Conservation Commission dated August 1st, 2022. Dear members of the Board of Health and Conservation Commission, recently, we received letters of concern from the Carver Board of Health and the Carver Conservation Commission expressing dissatisfaction over questions and concerns that were raised by the Planning Board regarding special permits requested in the Spring Street Innovation District. As the Special Permit Granting Authority, SPGA, we would be remiss in our responsibilities if we did not thoroughly question all aspects of any special permit, especially in relation to any and all waivers requested from the Carver zoning bylaws. As a discretionary, discretionary land use approval, the request for a special permit may be denied by the SPGA for projects that the SPGA anticipates will adversely impact the community. The SPGA is tasked not only with site-specific issues, but also regarding the overall project development and the potential long-term health, safety, and environmental issues associated with the project. Permitting decisions made by the Planning Board have the potential to impact the day-to-day lives of residents and the livelihood of others. The issuance or denial of a permit is a matter that is taken very seriously. The Planning Board must ensure that all procedural requirements are strictly followed to provide each person with the due process afforded them by the laws and the Constitution. The Planning Board permitting actions regarding this project have been reasonable and supported by the information provided to the board by the applicant and other interested parties, including the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission in accordance with existing zoning bylaw 4300, Water Resource Protection, Section 4350, Special Permit Procedures. As noted in the zoning bylaws, the Conservation Commission and Board of Health, as well as other boards, committees, and town agencies, can make recommendations on a special permit which carry great influence with the Planning Board. The Planning Board appreciates the input from both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health and places exceptional weight and gravitas on all recommendations and/or approvals of boards, committees, commissions, town agencies, and engineers. It is the responsibility of the Planning Board to review all the information collected, including site plans, approvals, and recommendations from other boards, committees, commissions, town agencies, and technical reports. So, each member may then formulate his or her opinion on whether to approve, deny, or approve subject to conditions of the special permit application. The Planning Board is well within its authority to ask the developer if an alternative site plan analysis was considered, such as placement of wells or septic systems, for each member to formulate his or her opinion on the proposed site plan in accordance with the existing zoning bylaw, Section 4350, Special Permit Procedures. The SPGA has the authority under Section 4300, Water Resource Protection, to question the proposed site plan to ensure the proposed plan will not, during the construction or thereafter, have potential adverse effects on health and safety, have any potential environmental impact on the aquifer or recharge areas, and that the proposal will not adversely affect existing or potential water sources. The Board has acted well within its authority. At no time did the SPGA ask questions outside of its authority. At no time did the SPGA request the applicant and engineer to consider changing the location of the proposed well or septic system. The Planning Board asked if all alternatives had been considered. The SPGA has taken into consideration the recommendations for this special permit from the Board of Health and Conservation Commission for specific lots, and at no time questioned either board's authority on the matter of wetland protections or Title V requirements. The Planning Board is committed to working with all boards, committees, commissions, and town agencies. The Planning Board would like to extend an invitation to both the Board of Health and the Conservation Committee, Commission. Excuse me, I think there's a typo in there, so. The Planning Board would like to extend an invitation to both the Board of Health and Conservation Commission respectively to schedule joint meetings to discuss any concerns, questions, or projects that may be pertinent. The Planning Board remains steadfast in the fact that it is the Special Permitting Authority under Section 4300, Water Resource Protection Bylaw, as defined in Section 4350 through 4352 of the Carver zoning bylaws. If you have any further questions, comments, or recommendations, please do not hesitate to contact the board. Kind regards, Cornelia Shea, Town of Carver, Planning Board Chairman. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is, I believe in the hands of Mr. Bott, Planning Director Notes.
We have minutes of.
Excuse me, Tom.
Pardon?
Discussions would be next, right?
No, Planning, Planning Director Notes, if, if you have anything.
I have nothing.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, anybody have any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Sure.
Mr. Bott.
Sure.
Is there any way we can get a representative from NSTAR here to confirm whether we can put electric underground, or does it have to be a phone poles? Because if we do solar projects, we want them underground, and we did a bylaw for it. But yeah, when it comes to the interconnection, it seems like there's going to be 15 poles up to do it. But then, if you do a, geez, it's. If you do a, I can't think of it. Excuse me. I'll move on to that. So, alls we get is from the solar projects saying, NSTAR told us, this is how it has to be. That's hearsay to me unless I see something in proof. I have talked to a few people that I do know work for NSTAR. They're always telling me they do have representatives that would gladly come to a meeting and explain things to us. The purpose of this is because we do have bylaws saying it's going to be underground, but every time we do it, it's going to be stopped because NSTAR wants it above ground. I would like to get a definite answer from NSTAR, how this actually works.
Okay, I'll.
If, if that is possible.
No, well, all things are possible, so I'll reach out to the folks at NSTAR.
Because even these little projects, culversacks there where we put like eight, nine houses, everything's underground, but I don't see no telephone poles. And I know it's a little bit different because the waterage and everything, but I still don't even see a telephone pole there to make the connection.
Yeah, well, without getting, without getting the fine grain between a subdivision plan and, and Eversource running the utilities place, let me reach out to them and, and let them know what, what we, what we're talking about.
I mean, you know, that's my.
I think it's a great idea.
I mean, this, this way we know what can be done enough. I mean, this, this way we know what can be done and not be done, you know? Or give us some kind of clue what's going on, other than hearsay, you know? And I don't mean that disrespectively.
Yeah.
But I don't hear from the other side at all.
Yeah.
We also have the, uh, Solar Moratorium Committee that's gonna be forming, and this would be good information, uh.
Yeah, and that was my thought along that same line, that we're gonna bring in a few folks to talk with, uh, with the zoning bylaw committee, I think is what we're calling it, uh, these days. Uh, but I think that'd be a great take to have them speak to both the board and to that group if we can line them up, uh, to do so. So that, that's a great call, and, you know, they're, they talk about their, uh, I don't, I don't know who the current customer service person is, but the guy he used to be was, uh, somebody new, but I'll, I'll track him down.
I would, because I, I would like more information on that.
I'm with you. Yeah, and, uh, you know, in spite of all the things that I said about Eversource tonight, uh, they don't deny them for the most part, uh, and they'll still come to our meeting, uh, you know, uh, I'm, I'm assuming. So yeah, let me, uh, let me get to work on that.
I'm, I'm sure if you invite them and let them know what we're looking, put some answers on, I think they'd be, uh, faithfully welcome to come.
I got a charming and engaging side, I'll see if I can get that ramped up for the call.
Okay.
And plus, with the, uh, new Solar Moratorium Bylaw Study Committee meeting, I think it would, like you said.
It would help them out as well.
It would help them out as well.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Excellent.
And that's all I have to say.
All right, um, the chair will accept a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of six twenty-eight, oh, I'm sorry, um, any further discussion?
Thanks, Chris. I'm good this week.
Congratulations to Middleborough Little League for moving another step closer to the World Series champions.
Oh, nice.
So, uh.
Good for them.
That was all I had, um, and, uh, the Planning Board would, would like to give its best wishes to Ms. Sardillo, who's absent this evening. Yes. So, uh, the board will accept a motion to approve the minutes of six twenty-eight, twenty, twenty-two.
Those are the ones we skipped last time, right?
They are, yes. Okay.
I'll move to accept those.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, and the board will accept the motion to approve the minutes of the seven twelve, twenty twenty-two Planning Board meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion. Oh, one moment.
I have one question, uh, so I think we carried over that top line from June 20th, cause John, you were at the July 12th meeting, correct? You were remote on the June 28th meeting, but you were here on the July 12th meeting, correct?
He, he was here, yes.
Yeah, cause at, at the top, it says John Gasky remote on both of them, so we're gonna strike out.
All right.
John Gasky remote on July 12th. Oftentimes we're looking at the stuff, I mean, when I first looked at minutes, they had Jim Walsh at the meetings for a while after he wasn't driving to town anymore. So sometimes that sort of format stuff gets kinda hung up in things, so, uh, so that's the, uh, the only thing I wanted to bring up.
I believe the motion was made by Mr. Dion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gatski, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gatski.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Thank you all for joining us.